So the agenda today is first an overview and kind of where we are now. I know the committee, some of these slides you have seen a few times before because we've been doing this for a couple of years, but we also have people who are attending regularly at our Zoom meetings and our Sunday services who have never even seen our building. And so I think we need to be sure we, I have a quick overview to bring everybody up to speed. Then I want to go over what happened last week. We asked you to include last week, we asked you to have questions. And I know that we've had great participation in watching the video from last week from people that couldn't make it on Sunday. It is on our website. But I want to give a chance for feedback and more questions and stuff. And then I have some fundraising updates on where we are as we're in that process. So just to bring us all back to the beginning, why are we doing this? Why do we need a new sanctuary? If you have not been at our site, we currently have a sanctuary called Daniel's Hall, which seats about 140 people and it looks like a conference room. And we have decided that we want something that is prettier, allows us to grow, provides for community outreach, wants to draw in the community and would allow for rental revenue for weddings and such. It doesn't look like a church, so it doesn't get rented like a church. Where we are now in April 18, the board authorized exploration of a new sanctuary in an initial phase of a campaign. We moved to our current site in 2013 and that was always our intention to turn. There are three buildings around the courtyard and there was always our intention to turn the two-story building into a sanctuary. It's had a number of iterations and by August of 18, we had a design for a new sanctuary. And we had a first phase of the capital campaign, which raised $585,000. And then we kind of paused and didn't know what to do. And in January 2020, we agreed to, let's see if we can afford this thing. So that started a second phase of the capital campaign. As we all know, COVID-19 took over by March and we postponed it, but we're back into it at this point. After we finished the operating campaign, the board and the property use group said, you know, there's really no reason we can't keep going with this. We're on a roll. Our operating campaign went well. And we still need a new sanctuary, so let's do it. And so some of the things that when you look at the design, the design is well-suited for social distancing and fresh air. In fact, the church we went to see last week is still having onsite meetings using the, some of the features of their new sanctuary. And in additional, the 250 seats we're planning inside the back wall will open, making the full courtyard accessible for additional seating, which is a big plus. So last week we had a tour of the Gloria Day Lutheran Church down in Dana Point. And if you have not had a chance to look at the video or weren't on the call, it is available on our website under who we are slash sanctuary. Just because I've been giving you rental updates all along and didn't want to leave that out. The, we also came up with the idea of making our entire site a spiritual center. We currently, our third building right now, which we're not using for our own purposes, is rented out to a variety of commercial enterprises. And we decided that we would like to rent it just to churches. We have assigned leads with the Orange Brownie Friends Meeting. We met with them yesterday on some of their tenant improvement issues. They're in the process of remodeling those suites. Those are the two suites that are closest to our church office in that building, the end towards, towards the church office. And we've also talked to the Christian Zionists who are occupying what will become the new sanctuary building right now, suite five in that building. And so they obviously will have to leave when we start, when we start demolition of that building. But they are very exciting about occupying the other end of that, of the, what's currently the rental building. But they'll stay where they are until we need them to move, until we start getting serious about taking that building down. And we hope to keep some of that space for our own use. So that's all in place and moving forward. So this is a time when it would be good to unmute yourself. These are a couple of pictures from the Gloria Day Church from last week. The one on the left is the sanctuary and the one on the right is the courtyard, which shows the, how the entrance, how their courtyard, they have a parking lot and then they have a courtyard, which is all zero escape with benches and stuff around. And then they have their sanctuary, which the whole wall of the back wall of the sanctuary opens up. So this is a good time, you know, one thing I didn't mention, this is our first town hall since February because we had not planned one in March because we were supposed to be doing this tour in March. So, and because we had a Zoom bomber on our annual meeting in June, we haven't really had a chance to talk together since February. So that's one of the reasons we're doing this town hall today. So I'm hoping to hear from some of you as to questions, comments, what you liked about it, what you didn't like about it.
Are there any? Can we have a quick view around it?
Ah, that's better.
Okay. So this is, this is the Gloria Day Church. And then I also included a couple of pictures that the artist gave us. This is what our church would look like. So this is the outside looking in from the courtyard with that wall that opens up in the back. And then the inside, a better view of the inside. So I put them right next to each other so we can switch back and forth. That's what we needed to do. So this is a live shot of an actual church and the other ones are just rendering.
Nancy?
Yeah?
If I could add, one of the big differences, they use pews at Gloria Day and we are planning on using chairs. And one of the big reasons for that, of course, is that we will use our, that ball for more things than just services. Gloria Day uses it exclusively for services and they have to because they got pews. They can't open it for anything else. So ours is going to be much more multi-functional than their building is.
Nancy?
Yeah?
Hi, this is Marilyn. I thought the virtual tour was just fabulous. And if our church turns out anything like this, I'll be very happy. When they were talking about the floor last week, I know they have cement, but when Craig told us what our floor would be, it broke up. So I missed that. Do you have any comment about what the floor will be in our church?
Linda or Craig, do you want to answer that?
Sure. It'll be, it'll be similar to what was in Dana Point. It's going to be polished concrete.
Okay.
And it looks great. If you, if you came through the video last week, it's a beautiful look and it
Right.
it should maintain well over the years.
I was hoping that's what we'd go for.
Is there?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Anna.
Everybody said how big the opening was at Modern Day. How big is our opening that we can open up? How many feet is it?
The Modern Day opening, or the one in Dana Point was 50 feet, which is pretty wide. Ours is about 30 feet.
30 feet. Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Back to the floor. Is that, how is that polished concrete different from what we have in Daniel's Hall right now?
Well, the polished concrete was done sort of knowing they were going to do that from the beginning, from when they first poured the concrete. So it's a different process. Daniel's Hall was never intended to be polished from the beginning. So it kind of shows. They tried various things, but
Yeah.
With it not being done intentionally from the start, you don't get a good end product where when you intend to polish it from the start, you end up with a good product.
Yes. And we stained it, which was a mistake. It didn't come out anything like what we thought it was going to be dark brown and it's kind of orange. So, and there's not much you can do about it at this point. So we didn't have a chance to, you know, it just, we don't have, we didn't have anywhere near as much control over the process as we would if it was intended that way from the start.
Nancy, how many people would the new place seat?
250.
Plus, plus.
Plus what comes in from the outside, yes. But that's what it's rated for. Yeah.
Good.
Okay, Nancy? What will this, like this, the ceiling or roof line look like on, on the new sanctuary?
It's, it's planned similar to, you can see it there on the screen. It's kind of flat. You can see through those wood slats up to the, up to the, and they had some, I don't think they're drawn in. Oh yeah, they are. This, I think that is a skylight. There are skylights above it to let the natural light in through the top.
Also speakers and I think some other directional lights are up there as well. And just to remind everybody, you can go on the website and we only have two renderings here, but there's a full complement of renderings there on the website. O C U U C dot org, the sanctuary section. And also the initial presentation that was done by David Kaidel, Labor Day 2018, the architect.
Nancy, this is Alex. A question about the blackout shades. I heard the architect mentioned that they would be in our sanctuary, but they weren't in the Dana Point building. Will these be inside the double pane windows or will they be?
I would think they would be.
That would be something that would be added at a later date, however, because it's not being factored into the overall price at this point.
Yeah.
And the windows are the highest rating, whatever the rating is for energy that's present in California. And so they will have some, it won't be like absolutely clear where the, you know, what I'm talking about. They'll have some tint to it, so.
We have a question from Jeff and Ulus.
Yeah. Hi Nancy. So Jeff and I know that the sanctuary campaign was launched even before the pandemic. And so our question is now there is a pandemic and there is a talk that the Zoom, the service will be available on Zoom. How confident that we know that after the pandemic, there will be a lot of people that will want to use the sanctuary, you know, as opposed to just follow the service on Zoom? And is there any polling after the pandemic to see how strong the reactions to the new sanctuary?
I have heard, and I'm, this isn't really related, but I have heard that, you know, we have a number of people who are attending our services regularly from out of town, from all over the country, actually. And, or people that just find it too difficult to get to our church on Sunday morning. So I have heard it said that we will never discontinue the Zoom part, even when we are able to come back live because it offers so much more accessibility to people. You know, I'm not, I'm not in a position to say that's true, but I've heard many, I've heard Sean and others say that, why would we stop? Instead of the Facebook recordings of just the sermon and the Zoom thing seems to be much more interactive and people are much more, feel much more connected through that. So I would think we would continue it even when a lot of us would be coming back live.
I can confirm that that is true. And then we have purchased a license to be able to stream all of this music. That kind of was our wall we kept hitting before, but we purchased a license. We'll have to do that every year. So now we're following all the copyright provisions to be able to broadcast on Zoom, so.
Yeah, I would, I would add that, that prior to the pandemic, we did broadcast on Facebook Live. The only thing we were doing though, for the most part, was the sermon. And part of the reason for that was copyrighted music and broadcasting it live. There are issues around that. But through, that's good efforts. We've been able to overcome that at least for our services. And so we'll be able to do the entire service.
Beth, to put it in perspective, about how much does that yearly license cost us?
Oh, it was about $300. And then every quarter I have to make a list of who, which songs I use, which composers I used. And those composers each get, I don't know, a nickel or something for every time someone reports that in. So it's interesting process.
Question. Going back to the polished cement, it would look good, but some of us find it very hard to stand and walk on cement. And there's a lot of cement areas, well, but the any areas that give us a little relief.
We don't have any planned right now. Gloria Day, I don't know that you can see it in their, their side aisle. They did have, their center aisle had carpet in it, but they just the carpets so that they could put carpet down and not have a lift, you know, that people could. We can talk about that. That's obviously an extra spot. And, but it was just in the aisle. It wasn't under the pews.
And outside there'd be no softer areas?
I, you know, I'm, I, we can add carpet anywhere. What we have to solve is a trip hazard to make.
Yeah, right, right.
Nancy, I just wanted to return to Ulysses statement. I think while we are going to hopefully continue with Zoom, we need to circle back to why we're doing the new sanctuary for growth and also for the church community and other opportunities. I think that it doesn't have to be an either or. I think that we're, there's a huge commitment at this point to the sanctuary. And we hope that others that haven't donated yet will continue to get on board. And we need the sanctuary to grow. We need the new sanctuary and to be able to use Daniel's Hall for the intended purpose as a social hall. So I think that we can do both, but I don't know about you guys, but seeing that new sanctuary, even if you saw it online last week, it's just, it's really exciting to think that that could be ours. And, you know, not that large, but a smaller version of it. And I'm excited about it. And I've heard a lot of you say the same thing. So I hope that we can keep the momentum going despite COVID and everything.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you heard the service this morning, being together is, is a spiritual thing. And
I have a question.
Yeah, we have, we have a question from Amy and Randy, followed by Jeannie Chris.
Okay.
Amy and Randy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to congratulate, I want to congratulate all of you who've put this together. It's just been amazing to watch it all take place. I was wondering if we considered having an elevation change from the front of the sanctuary to the back? So that we, more people would have unobstructed view if, if they were height challenged, let's say.
We, we talked about that last week and it would dramatically reduce the flexibility of the use of this facility. Because then if we wanted to use it for a dinner or something, we'd all be kind of leaning a little. And so we've decided not to. I think it will be ameliorated some by the fact that the ceiling is so high. So everything and the, you know, the podium and everything is raised up to, and you can see that their video. Part of our problem is we can't raise anything up any higher in Daniel Hall because the ceiling's there. So we, we don't even put the, the title of the hymn at the top. We put it at the bottom so that most people can see the words. So having the height of the sanctuary, I think will help some.
I think so too. Thank you.
Jeannie?
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody that's working on this new sanctuary situation. I'm, I think it's wonderful. I'm happy about it. I'm happy to contribute to its completion. I'm just thrilled. I can't wait for this pandemic to be situated so that we can get together again. I really miss being together. I love the Zoom, the virtual meetings, but I really long to see everyone in person. Even though I do have difficulty getting around still and it seems to be getting worse. The Zoom meetings are not as satisfying as the in-person ones. Even if I can't come every single Sunday, I can Zoom on the ones that I can't make it and I can be there in person in that wonderful new space. I'm, I'm just thrilled. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
What are we going to do with the old floor in Daniel's Hall?
At some point we would like to re, put some kind of flooring on top of that.
Because it is in bad shape.
And the kitchen too, the big kitchen in the background. We, we put like garage flooring on it because we thought we were only going to be doing that for a couple of years and it's worn out.
Okay.
This is Don Cherry.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask or point out that they've got a tremendously large screen in the Gloria Dia Lutheran sanctuary. Compared to what you proposed for the sanctuary, would you consider moving to such a large screen?
There's actually nine monitors that, that are up there. Ours only shows one in this picture, but there's actually two. There's one on this wall and there's one, well, there's one on here. There's one over here, I believe.
Yeah, it's above the audio booth on the opposite.
So that people sitting on this side of the sanctuary can see a monitor because these people are obviously underneath it and can't see it. So there's two is the advantage of, it's still a pretty big one and there's two of them instead of one.
Yeah, but also I thought there was some question about if you were showing a movie, then are you also thinking of having a screen drop down in the center?
I think everything will be on monitor rather than on a projector at this point. I mean, the world is headed that way. And
In fact, Nancy, last, last week, the architect did talk about this, the fact that screen prices are coming down dramatically from what they used to be. And he even talked to TV screens. So he talked about an eight-foot screen. One, one screen is eight foot wide. So by the time we're ready, who knows what's going to be available and it should be more affordable than, than they have it and they are now.
It says they'll be free by then.
And I point out there's a difference here. What we have are going to have our monitors, okay? Like your TV screen, they are getting cheaper the bigger. I think what I heard was screen, which is like a front projection screen rolling down and stuff. Part of the problem with screens are though they're somewhat inexpensive and the projectors are tricky, you have to have a really dark room to be able to see anything. We certainly ran into that with the film festival, with our projector in Daniel's Hall. It just, you can't get the room dark enough to really be seeing things well. So there, that's two different terms. I hope, I hope that clears that up.
Yeah. We have a question. Still a need for, for dark blackout screen. So I think we need to look at that technology when we get there. Because they say this screen is made for projecting a lot of light in the daytime and they don't have any problem with seeing it. We didn't see it on, so we can't.
We have a question. A question from Francie.
Francie, yeah, I, a couple of things. I think the new sanctuary is beautiful and I love it. And I kind of want to remind everyone, that was our original goal for moving to our present premises was to have a sanctuary. So I hope we remind everybody about that. It's not just a, a thought that just came up. It's our original goal and I like to see us fulfill that. Here's a little small technical question. Having worked on the coffee hour section, I hope everyone remembers to put a pass-through for the kitchen in Daniel's Hall when we're all done with this. And, and include it in your cost estimates. And, and, and here's a logistic thing, I'm sure it's being taken care of. We're, we're a spiritual community. I mean, we're going to be renting to spiritual communities, but if we open up this, the services to include more people, how is that going to coincide with other churches having their services at the same time and wanting to do the same? I don't know. Well, we've been, we've been kind of existing with the Christian Zionists for years and it hasn't been a problem. They've been, they've been in their suite for a long time. And the Quakers are actually anxious to share our coffee hour. So they, they they need very, a lot of quiet during their service, but it's at the same time as ours. That's one of the reasons they picked the one, the end of the building away from where the new sanctuary will be. So they, because they, they don't want to hear our music strangely enough. Yeah, but I mean, I mean, if we open it up so you use the space outside of the sanctuary to include more people and the other churches are having their services at the same time, will that intrude? Or maybe they might decide to have their services outside. So I'm just curious how that's going to work out. We'll have to work on the, on the logistics of the sound during the service. They're putting in a lot of, they're putting their meeting room on the other side, on the parking lot side of that suite on purpose so that they can buffer the noise. And I, I think we'll have to work on, if it's too loud, we'll have to accommodate. They don't have the right to use the courtyard for their services. Yeah. And the Christian Science Monitor Group too, same thing. Yeah, yeah. And same with the Christian Zionists.
We have a question from Barbara's.
Question.
Question for Barbara's laptop.
Oh.
How can I have a question? Hey.
Raise your hand if you need to be recognized, please.
She has. Okay. Francie requested that we put a pass-through in Daniel's Hall. And remember correctly, we, there's already a pass-through built in that's under the drywall. So that structurally, it's all set up for that when, when we get ready to
Correct.
install.
Oh, oh, good. I think adding the pass-through is, it's not in the budget for this part, but I don't think it's going to be a huge expense.
We have a question. Your Lynn?
I'm sorry, tech stupid. Okay. Yeah, the courtyard, the rendering, I might've asked this before, but I can't remember. The courtyard rendering from the architect shows a big old diagonal pathway. We're not changing the courtyard. We're not getting rid of the pergola, right?
No.
Okay, good. Thanks.
You can see here, there is a big overhang coming out from the, which will help with the shade and allow us to be comfortable if we're using that extra space. And also provide for the walkway so that you don't get wet if you need to go to the bathroom. To the other building.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready to move on?
Maggie has a question.
I just had a comment. I love the big open door. I think that will be very welcoming to walk-up visitors. They don't have to go past anybody and feel all exposed as they join our service for the first time. I think that's a great concept.
Thank you. And if anybody's interested, I was impressed to see them last week. They, they are very secure when they are closed. I was, that was my concern. Because those of you that have had bi-fold doors on your closet know that they are kind of sketchy affairs. And, but this is very secure. Each, each thing locks in and there's a pin that goes up and down into the floor and the ceiling. So I feel very secure to me when, when it was closed.
Nancy, just to mention the, the product, this particular door is called Nana Wall. N A N A W A L L dot com. If you want to look at different applications for the doors. And there's one in Irvine at the, on Michelson, the Jewish synagogue that was created out of a health club there. They've used these walls, these Nana walls as well. So that's another local thing in Orange County to look at.
Okay, are we ready to go on to financing?
Sure.
Okay. So this is the budget that we presented a year or so ago. This is, this is the original estimates on the cost. And we're talking about the middle one with 250 seats. They, there were several proposed. And we're talking about the middle one, which is, I, I use 1.75 out of this. I should tell you that we have just had, the architect after last week said, why don't we have an updated estimate? And so we are in the process of doing that for no cost. It's, we're just having a contractor come in and give us a, a shot just to make sure that we're, our cost numbers accurate or if it's not, we need to go back. So we're, we're double checking, but this is the So we're, we're double checking, but this is the same budget we've been doing all along. And we have a goal, 1.75 million to raise. I wanted to let you know what, what we're doing on it. As you heard earlier, the first round capital campaign, round one is, was, we raised $585,000. We have actually collected some of that. So we have a fair amount of money in the bank already to get going with. We received a spirit level grant. We got notification, I think in February?
In May.
Uh, May, okay. That's right, we put the bid in, we put the proposal in in March. And so we, we received notification, we're gonna be getting $250,000 for this. That is five, $50,000 a year for five years. And I think we get the first one this fall, first, first installment this fall.
That's correct.
We have a capital campaign round two going. So far, we have raised $187,000 on round two and it is still going. We're hoping to get to everybody by the end of the month. You should be hearing from somebody soon if you have not already, which means we have already raised over a million dollars. We, we know where that money is coming from. We put a goal for round two of $500,000, which means we have $313,000 to go. So that's an arbitrary goal. It seems like something that is feasible and we're hoping to energize everybody to make that happen. Obviously, if it goes higher, that would be wonderful because the rest of it would be on long-term financing. We, we may have some other small fundraisers or whatever. This, the, this does not, I think, scare the finance committee too much. Although obviously the smaller that amount is, the better. But just let you know, I mean, this round is really all about convincing ourselves, is this feasible? And so this is where we're making that decision. And we're gonna, we're deciding collectively if we're willing to commit to this and make it feasible. So, but this line right here is hopefully very permeable, could, could shift. So are there any questions on this? But go on.
Yeah, I have some questions. Does everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. What about the stewards? I thought they were gonna loan us, loan us some money. Is that money already in there?
Well, that would be in the financing part.
Right.
Financing might come from.
It's, it's not included now, Sonny, but it is an option that we have available. So kind of depending on how much we need for that last bit of long-term financing, the endowment borrowed from.
The stewards did come to us early on and said they thought they could loan another $350,000, which is in the ballpark. I mean, we're, all our numbers are, are not that exact at this point. We're, we're working with big numbers here.
So if we take in consideration the stewards, then we're getting really close.
Exactly.
Okay.
But we still need everybody to step up.
Right. The more we move this line up, the better.
Now is the time.
Every dollar counts, every dollar.
Amen.
Amen, sister.
Okay.
This is Kathleen, I have a question. My understanding is we need to spend $50,000 of the spirit level grant in the coming year, correct? And so my question is, how will that, what, what is the vision of how that amount of money will be spent in the immediate, short term?
Actually, this is Tom, so I work with the Spirit Level Foundation folks on this. The, it doesn't actually have to be spent in the first year after receiving it. They're looking at it over the five-year period of time. What they're not in the business of doing is, is funding long-term bank accounts. So they want the money spent. They understand that this is a long-term project. So you don't have to spend the $50,000 this coming, each year that we receive the $50,000. They're looking at it over the longer haul. So, and we'll almost certainly, because we're going to have to do some short-term planning and because all of the money's coming in, pledges are coming in over time, the spirit level grants coming in over time. For those reasons, they understand that it's going to take a while. They have already told us that they're looking at it over the full period. So it's not just $50,000 each year. Although I think we'll end up spending at least $50,000 in the next year for plans, permits, and other things that are going to be required.
Okay, thank you.
Incidentally, they've not given us the first $50,000 yet. That won't, won't come until October and November.
So I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity here about the financing so that we're all on the same page. For the long term, the blue part I was talking about on the previous screen is long-term financing, which is some kind of mortgage or loan secured by the, well, the mortgage is secured by the building, which we would pay off over a number of years after construction complete. And it'll be the difference from whatever the project budget ends up being and what we're able to raise. There is also short-term thing we may need. We are aware of that. We've got the spirit level over five years. The pledges, unpaid, the unpaid pledges are over three years. And so we may need some short-term financing if the bills are coming in faster than the pledges are. Once we have a schedule and we'll map this out and figure out where the, what we're expecting as far as cash, what we've got and what we're expecting as far as cash in and what we need, expecting as far as cash out. The architect will give us a budget that will be monthly and we'll figure out what our needs are on that. That, that's part, is the easy part as far as I'm concerned. I, I think a lot of organizations, that, that, the long-term is the part that I'm, that we need to get our heads around philosophically that we, that we want to take that on. And I just want to talk a little bit about the source of financing. It could be either from our current endowment fund, bank, find the, bank financing or a combination. I know there's people who are concerned about whether we should borrow from the endowment, borrow more from the endowment fund because we already have a loan from the first phase of about, a little over $200,000 is the balance on it right now. The UU may be willing to guarantee bank financing. Once we get to that point and are talking, we know what kind of money we need, we, I promise that we will be doing the research on both forms of financing, both from the endowment and from the bank commercial financing. And we'll be able to come back with you with pros and cons of both. And so we can have a discussion about that. I, I just wanted to let you know that it's all on the table right now. So that's all I have, are there more comments?
I have a question. I've heard that banks do not like to loan churches money because they don't like to foreclose on a church if it's necessary. Are you hearing reluctance from banks?
We haven't tried recently. I have heard that it is more possible than it was and mostly with guarantees. And that's where the UU would come in, that they'd be willing to guarantee it. And they're a big enough organization that a bank will believe that they will make good on that. So that, that's where, that's the difference, I think, than it was, you know, 20 years ago.
Okay, thanks.
I want to say, thank you and congratulate you guys for the work you've been doing. This is, even the financing is making sense now. You've taken a project that I didn't think was, we had a chance of finishing in a couple of years into something that looks feasible. So it's a lot of hard work and a lot of people's involvement. And from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you. You've, you've been doing a great job.
I, I do think the town hall meetings have really helped keep people on the page and I appreciate all your feedback and questions, it keeps us going.
Hey Nancy. I'm just curious, do we have a, a date or a goal to break ground? Like what, now that we're closer in terms of the fundraising, have we set a date for, a potential date to break ground?
Well, we don't have authorization to build yet, so we need that first. So I think that once we get through this round of the capital campaign and the Corporate Use Group and the Finance Committee and the Board all look at it and say, where are we? And we will talk about, are we ready to bring it back to the congregation and ask for authorization to build? And I would think at that point, we would be talking to the architect and stuff about a schedule and when the we, what would be feasible and when we might be able to break ground.
Permitting process can be time-consuming according to other churches. We talked to the, the people that worked at Gloria Day indicated their, their permitting process, they had a lot of other things to do. They had to stabilize an entire hillside and other things. But they had probably close to six to nine months, I think, you may recall.
Yeah, nine months after we say go.
The good thing is we have the conditional use permit that you guys all got back when you're, after you moved, that was done by the other architect. So that's great. I mean, that would probably be a cost of about 1,500 bucks or more added. So we're operating off that same conditional use permit. So one thing before we close, I wanted to give a big shout out to all the campaign leaders that, raise your hand if you're a campaign leader. You've been asking everybody for money. You know, folks, that's not easy to do. It's, it's tough. We get outside our comfort zone. And the, the best thing you could do is if, if they've reached out to you, please have the courtesy of responding to them on email or calls or Zoom or whatever. And also, if you've said, no, I can't do it, rethink that decision and think about $100 over three years. I mean, if that's, that's okay, we want everybody on board with this project. So just think about it, how, where could I make some sacrifice somewhere for $100 over three years? If that's where you are, or more. So thanks, thanks to everybody. It's, it takes all of us together to make this happen.
Yeah, I think that's very important. And, and I can tell you that lenders and our, and our, and our, each of us makes a difference. How many are participating? There, there will be a question, how many of the congregation are participating in this? Because it's a sign of the help and the support of the congregation for the project.
Nancy, what happens to the groups that are using the two-story building once we break ground?
Oh, well, right now, the Christian Scientists will go into the other rental building. All the temporary people will, we are, will be moved to other places where they won't be able to. Once we break ground, they will have to be in our other two spaces. Right now, they're not meeting at all because of COVID. But
I thought the AA group was meeting. I thought the AA group was meeting.
This is Meg. The CA were, were meeting and then Newsom came down with the second lockdown and they shut everything down. But we do have contracts with the Apostolic Church and they use Daniel's Hall. And Bridge, which I'm not sure will ever come back again or not, they use Daniel's Hall. But we are currently renovating Victoria Room in the RE Building. And it's gonna be much bigger and we could have theater-style eventually seating in there and movable tables. So that's another area that could be used during the week to supplement the, the 12-step programs.
Thank you.
Nancy, do you have any closing comments? Because what I can do is I can stop the recording at this point in time after you've made your closing comments. And I can leave the Zoom meeting up and running so that people can continue to ask questions in a more informal atmosphere.
I would, yeah, thank you all for being here. Your feedback is always helpful. And as Linda said, you're, you're, you're voting with your pocketbooks at this point and all participation is super important. So thank you all and thank you all for, for being part of this. It's part of how we are a community. I'm gonna stop the share, meaning the end of the